Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, September 8th, and I will call to order a meeting of our Licensing Board with Alderman Butchlick, myself, and Alderman Zingshaim here present with the Licensing Board. Our first item of business is approval of the regular meeting Licensing Board minutes from August 18th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick.
Second.
You guys said that literally at the same time.
I heard an echo. It was not an echo.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim for the second. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our only item of business tonight is an available Class B combination license. Clerk, I'm going to turn it over to you if you want to kind of give us some background on that.
Sure. So, the City of West Bend has a total of thirty-three available Class B combination licenses that are available to anyone within the city who decides to open a business. Applebee's earlier this summer closed their doors, and this is the license that opened up due to their closure. So, we have two applications that came in, one from Gruen Hexa. Yeah, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. And the other one is from Lieutenant Ray Dickop, American Legion Post 36. They are the two applicants that are hoping to be selected.
Ian?
Yep. So, and I'll just note, the city is at quota other than this, so this is the only original license available. I believe there may be one or two reserve, or there may be a reserve license available. The reserve licenses are the ones that come with a $10,000 upfront fee. The city does have specific provisions within the code about, you know, some of the considerations that you should look at. And, you know, it's, you know, whether it's the economics and whether the license is necessary for financial success of a business, what's the effect on local traffic and parking, proximity to other uses which may be incompatible, you know, economic benefit to the community, past experience of the applicant, et cetera. And, you know, based on those, you know, I believe it was, it's the clerk's recommendation for Gruen Hexa, just based on some of the economics and that it's an existing business that's looking to expand its operations, has been operating successfully with the Class B beer and Class C wine license up till now, so.
Thanks, Ian.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Could you repeat that? I cannot.
Gruen Hexa.
Okay, Gruen Hexa.
For that Class B license.
I'd second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have no more business before the Licensing Board, so I will adjourn.
I would like to call to order the City of West Bend Board of Public Works. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one would be the approval of minutes from our meeting August 18th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Zingshaim, Alderman. It was Alderman Sternig. Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, SWMP W-25-01 Lakewood Farms. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you. This is one of those items for a stormwater management agreement. Every time the city grants a stormwater management permit for development or redevelopment in the city, we enter into an agreement with the property owner to ensure that they will build the stormwater management facilities as intended per the design and that they will maintain it, maintain them over the years, so that they continue to function as intended through the design. So, this first one is for new residential subdivisions at the southwest quadrant of the city for Lakewood Farms. So, the proposed subdivision will consist of ninety-seven lot residential, and which will include four new streets and a wet detention pond in the southeast corner of the property. The detention pond will outlet to Colony Highway N and Riteaway, which drains east toward Highway 45 to a culvert that drains south under Colony Highway N and. So, after reviewing the permits, documents, and the plans, we recommend the board and council approve this agreement.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Zingshaim? Alderwoman Sizer? Are there any questions for Max?
Yes, I do have a question. It wasn't clear to me who maintains that detention pond long-term.
So, long-term, I guess it would be the homeowners' association, because originally, typically, the developer builds it, and then as the, they sell parcels, there's a homeowners' association, and each parcel would own equal share of the common area which include this pond. And so, they're owners, and they would be responsible for the maintenance.
Any other questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, SWMP W-0-7, Amendment Number Two. Max?
Thank you again. So, this is an amendment to an existing permit that was issued back in 2000 for the Wingate Creek Business Center at the corner of Wingate Street and Trenton Road. So, it was a stormwater management plan that involved a regional pond, so assumptions were made for the future development of each parcel. And based on that, the stormwater management facilities were designed to accommodate the future development. So, our goal here is when we get new developments, like this proposed We Energies Service Center and Storage Yard, is to make sure that whatever they develop on the piece of land they have matches what was planned in the original design, so that they stay in compliance with the approved permit. So, that's the exercise we did with We Energies here, and they are going to only have storm, stormwater inlets and pipes on their property that they'll have to maintain, since the rest of the development provided the features to collect the water and direct it to the existing pond. So, we made sure that their property is in compliance with the existing permit, and we do have an agreement for them to maintain the facilities they have on their site. So, that doesn't involve the existing facilities, it's just the facilities on their side.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Burquist and Alderman Sparts, thank you. Are there any questions for Max on the item number two, three? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, SWMP W-16-07, Amendment Two.
Thank you again. So, this is a permit amendment for a permit on a property that already was developed with a dealership, and they acquired the property next door, where there was a bank, razed the building in order to expand their parking area. So, they merged both the properties, so we had them do an amendment to the existing permit that they have, in order to provide stormwater management features on the land to the west of them. And so, they have a different stormwater management maintenance agreement than the existing one for the dealership itself. And so, we're just putting that agreement under the same permit number, because it's going to be the same property, the same owner. They'll have two maintenance agreements, and this one is the second one, for them to meet the requirement of the code and the DNR regulations.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Zingshaim? Or Alderman Schmidt? And second?
I was motion.
Okay, all right. Alderman Zingshaim first, Alderman Schmidt second. Are there any questions for Max on item four? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
No further business before the Board of Public Works. I adjourn as chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have three agenda items this evening. The first one is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, August 18th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Alderman, Alderwoman Sizer.
Second.
Second. We'll give it to Alderman Schmidt. Thank you. Any corrections, additions, deletions? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Second agenda item this evening is Resolution Number Thirty, Accepting a Rewarding Responders' Grant Through the We Energies Foundation. Welcome, Chief Daring.
Good evening, thank you. Early this summer, we identified a need to replace some tactical medical kits assigned to our special response team due to time-sensitive and expiring components. Captain Grinwald applied for a grant for full replacement cost of $1,703 through the We Energies Foundation Responders' Grant. On August 12th, we were rewarded the full $1,703, placed it into the PD State Grant Fund. I'm asking tonight for you to officially accept the grant, move it into our office and operating supplies account to purchase the medical equipment, and of course, thank our great corporate partners in We Energies and the We Energies Foundation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Burquist and Alderman Butchlick. Any questions for chief?
Thank you.
There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our third agenda item this evening is Resolution Number Thirty-One, To Terminate Tax Incremental District, TID-7. Welcome, John.
Thank you, everybody. So, TID number seven was created back in 1999. It has come to the end of its term of being a TIF district, so we are required by the end of the month to provide various paperworks, paperwork, as well as a resolution closing out the TIF to the DOR. The district has been fairly successful. We just want to give you a little bit of background here, let's see if I can find my notes. So, the district has generally performed as expected. When the state law did change a number of years ago with regard to the technical schools, we did apply and got an additional few years to the districts, which allowed it to complete financially where it is currently. The district, at this point, will be able to collect one more round of taxes that will go towards the debt of the TIF, and then when we're done with that last collection, we'll be about $250,000 short from that perspective for closeout of the district, some money that essentially needs to go back to the city. But at that closeout, basically, what will happen is all the taxing jurisdictions will start to see that full value back. So, just as a real quick summary, I'll just use some general numbers, but if you have a piece of property that was valued at $100,000, you built a building on it that's worth, let's say, $900,000, that increments the $900,000, the full values, that million dollars. The taxes over the lot since 1999 that had been going to the school district and the city and those other jurisdictions has been based on that $100,000. So, with the closure, that full million will go onto the tax rolls for all of those different entities in the community. And so, it essentially has done what it has performed. It's created additional value on those lands, it's provided some public infrastructure. You could even say, you know, since it's an industrial area, it provided a lot of jobs in that time period that it was a TIF. And so, for all intensive purposes, it is going to be a little bit short, but it has generally completed what it started out to. If we had one more year, we would actually end up in the red and have actually additional money we'd actually have to send back to the taxing jurisdictions. So, we're sort of right, right on the edge there of finling the district out at zero. I think that's pretty much all I need to say. The resolution is there, it is a requirement of state law from that perspective of closing out the district, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Can you just refresh my memory again? Where is TID-7?
Oh, sure. So, it is north of Washington, sort of between River and Ralph's, a couple blocks up in that, that particular area, if that helps.
Covers what?
So, it's between River and Ralph's, and north of Washington.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Just a quick question, John. As relates to this full district now being put on the tax roll, how does that now benefit all those taxing jurisdictions?
So, essentially, that value there, if that land had just stayed as vacant land, they would be, have been collecting the taxes that would be on the vacant land. Now that the district is closing, now they're going to see that full, full value. So, whether you're the county or the school district, you're going to see additional taxing value from the closure.
And with that closure, then, it goes, that tax, now the full tax amount, then will be going to the general fund as opposed to going to what, over the years, has been paying down?
Correct, yeah. So, in that example I had of the $100,000 and the million, we've been receiving the taxes on that $100,000. The taxes on the $900,000 has been going to pay off the TIF, and now with that, within that first year, the city would also be able to receive the full tax value of that, that million-dollar number.
Great, thank you.
Of course, the numbers are much bigger than I just used simple.
No, understood.
So, how does the, how's the $250,000 fit in? How does that affect things?
Essentially, it's dollars that would normally go back to pay out the general fund. So, usually, we, essentially, the TIF owes the general fund about $250,000. What will happen is that the general fund will just cover that 250. That's probably would be a wash within, if we could put a year or two more on the TIF district to collect that, you know, we'd only be capturing that hundred, so that dollar difference is, we would, you know, be able to get, to collect the full value within probably year two or year three after the closure. Did that make sense, or was I a little? I can restate it. I was thinking out loud.
So, it's not going to benefit the taxpayers until two, three years out, basically?
It will benefit the taxpayers in that all of the full value of the county and the school district is going back to those entities, and so they're going to see that substantial increase within their taxable value. For the city, we'll also be able to collect that, but that first year, we're going to have to, you know, pay off that 250. We're still going to collect the full value from that perspective.
John, the last report I saw, I've got it in front of me, the increment value is 23.3 million. The base value is 19 million, and it's now valued at 42.4, so over the life of the TID, it's gained 23.3 million in increment value.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that full amount now becomes taxable as opposed to just the base.
Correct.
Correct.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, just some more clarification on that $250,000. Bottom line, you got the pot for the TIF district, which the TIF districts kind of fund themselves, and we have the general fund, and the TIF district owes the general fund, the way I understand it, right?
Correct.
So, they're going to be bringing in the tax money, but there's the shortfall. Does that shortfall get covered by, can that get covered by any other TIF districts, so it doesn't come off the general fund? And is that something balancing that Jesse's going to have to do with the budget this year?
So, we do have some districts that do not bring in the revenue that was originally anticipated. We have other districts that, so we have donor districts as well as receiver districts, but that all has to be set up earlier. You can't set that up at the, at the require, at the end of the closure. So, essentially, we have no more options to extend this. The only, well, we extended it for the tech school option, so we got an extra couple years there. With regard to the only other option we could extend a district would be for affordable housing. So, you can extend a district one year for affordable housing. That money generated off of that TIF district could be used for some sort of affordable housing program, but you have to have all of the debt paid, and be it basically zeroed out at the end, and because we have this small amount of money that still needs to be paid back to the general fund, we can't try to capture that extra year.
John, it's not money that's coming out of the budget. This is shortfall payments that were made previously prior to the cash flow. So, this is money that was paid, I don't know, 10 years ago by the general fund at that point, that the hope was that it would have been repaid, like, now. So, it's not like $250,000 off the budget, it just means we don't have that additional, like, repayment to the budget. It's not like a negative, it's not like debt service or anything that we have to take off, you know, for the current.
It's not going to hit your current budget that you're discussing.
Correct, correct. It's just money that we're not recouping out of the, you know, surplus that developed later in the TID.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Are there any further questions or comments for John at this time? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening. It is Monday, September 8th, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a full quorum of our Common Council here with us tonight, and I wish you all a good evening. Our first item of business is our Common Council regular meeting minutes from August 18th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions, comments, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chief Noran and Chief Beistow will invite you to the podium tonight for an oath of office for some new firefighter EMTs in West Bend.
Thank you. We're very excited to have the administration there with office for three of our newest firefighters, and I'll let Assistant Chief Beistow do the introductions.
Our three newest recruits started on August 18th, and the first one we're going to introduce is Adam Freuen. Adam is a military veteran. He served the United States Coast Guard from July of 97 to July of 2001. While serving, he received unit commendations for Special Operations, Pistol Sharpshooter, Sea Service, and First Good Conduct Medal. Adam was honorably discharged. He comes from us, comes to us from the City of Milwaukee. He spent time with their, as a police officer, from 2003 to 2009, and then he switched over to the Fire Department. He recently retired from the Milwaukee Fire Department after serving for 16 years. He retired as a lieutenant paramedic. So, we'd like to welcome Adam Freuen.
Do all three at once. Do I do all three at once? It's fine. Help me come out out here, we'll get in front of the cameras. Right, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Adam Freuen.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
As firefighter paramedic?
As firefighter paramedic.
In the City of West Bend, Washington County?
In the City of West Bend, Washington County.
Swear that I will support?
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin?
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge?
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office?
The duties of set office.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next firefighter is Cassie Lowberger. Cassie has been with Newburgh Fire Department, where she served as firefighter EMT since November of twenty twenty. She had been described by many people that I talked to throughout her hiring process as a hard worker. She has done nothing but prove them right by the hard work she put into just making it through our hiring process. So congratulations.
Raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cassie Lowberger.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter EMT.
As firefighter EMT.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, lastly, we have Patrick Blazin. Patrick has served with the Wisconsin Army National Guard since two thousand and eleven to the present day. Patrick was honorably discharged. He was stationed at Fort Lenwood Springfield, Springfield, and transferred to Fort Sam Houston for basic training. Patrick has served in Afghanistan, the UK, Netherlands, Syria, and Iraq. Thank you for your service. Patrick has been a firefighter paramedic since June of two thousand and sixteen. Prior to us hiring him, he was part-time at Hartford Fire Department from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-four, when he was promoted to a full-time firefighter with the city of Hartford. When asking his chief about Patrick, he stated that Patrick was one of his most dependable and active employees. Thank you.
All right, raise your right hand, repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Patrick Blazin.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter paramedic.
As firefighter paramedic.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
City of West Bend, Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Can I have Adam and Cassie come back up here with Patrick and have you come over here by chief? And Chuck, why don't you get over there, too? Patrick's dad is sitting in the front here. He's doing double duty tonight for the daily news, but we want to make sure he gets a good picture for the newspaper tomorrow. So here we go. No. You got plenty. Awesome. Welcome aboard to all of you. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our consent agenda tonight. Items three through eight in your packet were just taken up in committee earlier tonight. I'll look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Lisa, that was Zingshaim and Sizer on the consent agenda. All right. Items for consideration tonight, number nine, ordinance number ten, which is amending section one point five zero two of the municipal code, destruction of records. Is that you, Lisa?
It is.
All right.
Okay, so what this does is it gives us, it provides us with a guide for record retention. At the moment, what we're supposed to be doing is sending a letter to the Wisconsin Historical Society, asking them, do you want this? Can we destroy it? Yada, yada. It's a little bit more of a process. And this guide essentially tells us, all we gotta do is look in it. It'll tell us, this is what we have, this is what they want. And if they want us to contact them, this guide will say that. So we only have the information necessary. A lot of municipalities are adopting this because it makes it a little bit easier.
Great. And for those following at home, the guide starts on page one oh three of the agenda packet. And it looks like this was put together by the state and, and approved for use of all Wisconsin government at the municipal level. And it's a guide that looks like it has an expiration date of twenty twenty-eight on it if it's not revised before that. So kind of following some good state guidelines here. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number ten and eleven tonight kind of go hand in hand. One of them is an amendment to our comprehensive plan. The other one is a zoning, right, rezoning of, of land that's located north of High Mound Road, High Mount Road, and on the west side of Stratford Road. So Jim, I'll let you take us through both of those items, number ten and eleven.
Sure, thank you. So tonight, we're asking council to endorse the ordinances to change the land use for approximately point one six acres of land. That would be a change from single family to two-family. And then the zoning would be the same. That would be a little bit slightly different area of point two acres. Difference is how we set up the zoning for the land use and the zoning amendments. That's why there's a difference with that. Essentially, what, back in July of this year, the council approved a land use and a zoning amendment to change the lands to the south from industrial and residential to two-family. This is just an additional area north of this that would encompass the entire two-family development that the developer is wishing to do for this area. So that's why we're asking tonight for the two zoning amendment, or the zoning and land use amendment.
Thank you, Jim. So I will entertain a motion now on the first item or item number ten in your packet, which is an amendment to the twenty twenty comprehensive plan for a recommended land use change from single-family residential to two-family residential for approximately point one six acres of land located plus or minus four hundred and fifty feet north of High Mount Road and on the west side of Stratford Road in the city of West Bend.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then I'll look for a motion on item number eleven, which is the rezoning of approximately point two acres of land located plus or minus four hundred and fifty feet north of High Mount Road and on the west side of Stratford Road from RS four, single-family residential to RD two, which is two-family residential.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Sparts.
Sure, Sparts.
Just on this and the last motion at the Plan Commission, these were both received really well by the neighbors. So it was a pretty good project.
Yeah, I've not heard anything negative in my district, so.
Good. The builders are here tonight. If any of, Bill, especially in your district, if you want to meet them and talk to them, great group, and they, they build a nice product. I think this will be really nice up there. Yeah. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, we'll move on to our reports tonight. There's been a handful of bid board meetings lately on the August seventh, August twenty-sixth, and September second. So Brett, I don't know if you want to try to cover all of those, but maybe just give us an update on what's happening with the bid board.
I'll try to get the highlights here. So one of the big highlights, I guess I would say, is that we've approved a bid operating plan. And, you know, details of that can be found in the notes. We've also elected, you know, actually, John Fellows is the executive director. Rebecca Servault is the bid board VP, or Sir Watt, excuse me. There's also a, we had a considerable discussion about a water spigot that was being used by Roots and Branches or would be used by Roots and Branches. And I think we've come to some agreement on that. We reviewed the results of a bid survey where they surveyed all the businesses involved with the Business Improvement District and on any number of issues, but basically assessed their priorities for, for action. We, let's see, we did not award any facade grants, and I think retain about seven thousand, if I'm not mistaken. We also reviewed a proposal from Roots and Branches about a, adopt a plot program. Additionally, we had a numerous, too many to recount, very exciting proposals about what's going on in the, in the fall, a lot of activities, everything from having the cast members of The Christmas Story come in for a screening to a number of new events. Some of them, the, if it wasn't already mentioned, the, there's been a transition to a new head of the downtown association. Phil is taking over for Newell. And she made her, I guess, in the last, one of the last two meetings, made her last presentation. And yeah, just looking forward to a lot of exciting events. I know the, the block party is coming up downtown. And so we definitely want to support that. And, and also the, the ends, the end of the farmers markets coming up. So make sure to attend if you haven't yet the season. So.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Library Board, August nineteenth.
That's right, sir. It was held on August nineteenth. The meeting followed the usual format, called the order.
The pledge of allegiance and approval of the consent agenda. Next was the financial reports for June and July. Besides the eleven cents of interest we took in on our checking account, we received some donations from Buban Orthodontics, Dunn Brothers Coffee, and the Glacier Hills Credit Union, all who donated to the summer reading program. Much appreciated thank you to all of these businesses. The library directors' report focused on recent flooding, imagine that, and the water damage that the library building received. Extensive damage occurred in the entrance area, the circulation desk, and the LRC. That's the library rec center. Carpeting needed to be replaced. Electrical conduits located in the floor were all affected and needed to be rewired, along with damage to the elevator. Water worked its way into the basement and the LRC, destroying those beautiful dance floors down there and a lot of drywall. It's, will all need to be replaced, along with lots of shelving. The good news, no books were destroyed or damaged, and temporary entrance is now located on the east side of the building, Office Sixth Avenue. So the library is open.
Yes.
Programming and events took the brunt of the storm, with many having to be canceled due to the lack of space considerations in the library. And a lot of the place was blocked off, and they're trying to dry it out and all that. So, but the very popular storytime program will be held at the Regner Beach House, okay, for the near futures. Special thanks to Parks and Rec Department and other city staff, especially John Fellows and, and Todd Meeks, who have done a fantastic job managing this incident for the library, so Steve can focus on library matters. Also, reported was a briefing on the new emergency event MOU. That's the memorandum of understanding. That's for the use of the facility during an emergency or serious incident. The board president again mentioned the cooperation between city staff and library staff of late, and how appreciated it is that, especially given the recent events. Okay, so that's well appreciated. Agenda items for consideration included, number one, the twenty twenty-six budget, of which we approved our, our part with the preliminary figures. Number two is the code of conduct policy updates that we discussed last month. That was also approved. And finally, number three, the twenty twenty-six CIP request. We were reminded that next meeting of the board will be on the sixteenth of this month, at which time we will discuss Steve's annual evaluation. Good times, I tell you. So with no further discussion, we adjourn.
All right. Thank you, Brett.
You're welcome.
Airport commission on August twenty-seventh. John?
Yes, sir. We met on the twenty-seventh, approved our minutes, of course, and we then proceeded to discuss our budget for the airport. There is a note that there will be a request for a full-time manager, which is now at the review process. We forward that to the city. Manager's report involved the security system being installed out at the gates. They're updating that. Discussion on the FOBs that each hangar receives and access. Parking lot projects ongoing. He's also working on obtaining, obtaining support letters for the airport master plan, which is being updated again, and, which is always being updated. And the fuel farm progress, projects being worked on, negotiations for some surrounding property through the state, and some other possible revenue being worked on. Other than that, there was maybe discuss, I don't remember the discussion on the future hangar transfer. Oh, yeah, somebody's selling a hangar and the owner will be transferred. But if that happens, that has to come through here and be approved and all that. So that's just still in discussion. And with that, we adjourn.
All right. Thank you. Plan commission, September second, last Tuesday.
I'll take that also.
Great.
All right. We had a pretty good, we thought it was going to be a lot longer than it was. Type of plan commission, when you looked at the agenda, you're like, oh, boy, I better figure out to take a nap before this one started because it's going to be a long night. We approved an extraterritorial map or a plot, survey map, map, twenty-four fifty North Wallace Lake Drive in the town of Trenton. We request, we requested approval for two extraterritorial survey maps on State Highway one forty-four and seventy-one eighty-four Pleasant Drive in the town of Barton. Those were approved. We held a public hearing and had action to allow a conditional use permit at one fifty-five North Main Street by Majak. And then we also rescinded or terminated their, the Majak permit that is at their previous address. So they're moving, and we had to change the permits to allow for the new address. And it is the Majak property or business. We had a development proposal. We had a public hearing and action for land use plan for the Rainbow Lake subdivision up on the north end there. And the homeowners and developer are working on forwarding the construction and the improvements for that area. So we approved the land use and the zoning. We had public hearings for both of those. Both of those were approved, so they will be moving forward, and there should be some progress starting to show up on the north end. That's a, that's a, the subdivision off of the condo development off of one forty-four where it goes down toward Wallace Lake.
Is it new development?
It'll be new. It'll be, it's a one and two family. They're proposing one and two families up there. And it'll be going into the same subdivision where the streets are platted now. platted now. And, uh, the, they had issues because of the homeowners associations and, um, some legalese and stuff like that. So that's all been approved and moving forward finally. So, and then we had, well, it was like three different public hearings and actions and, uh, we approved the site plan and we, uh, we basically got all the, crossed the Ts and dotted the Is for the, uh, properties that we just approved the land use and the zoning for right now. And so that was the, uh, uh, off of Stratford Road in Highmount. And that is the site plan and the survey maps are all updated. And that was all, a lot of discussion there because it's just a lot of action had to take place because of the change of property use. Um, what that property is, is that steel parking lot from when they played ball up there. And, uh, they're going to be building some one and two family houses in there. And it's a nice project. Uh, it'll help the neighborhood. The neighbors were excited about it. Um, so we did that. And then we did a over, we had to, uh, make a change for the Mr. Car Wash over up on, uh, where the old credit, credit union, what building is up on the corner of Silverbrook and Highway 45 there, up on the hill. Um, so there was some issues there. That, that site plan was approved or that changes were approved for that car wash, uh, pending approval of the traffic plan, um, traffic analysis. So that'll be, that'll be going in there. Uh, we also had discussion, a lot of discussion on a property on South Main that is the old Omicron and the eyeglass business. Uh, they are selling to Culvers and Culvers is putting a, a plant, uh, a new restaurant in. And we looked at the site plan and the traffic flow through it and had some recommendations. So we approved the site plan also pending a traffic study that needs to be completed, that work needs to be done. Um, the owners were all, were excited for this property. They, uh, um, are really looking to help alleviate some of the stress on their other business and to bring Culvers to the south side, which is a good thing. Um, so we all, we also approved their cer, the new survey map because there's two properties that are now being, uh, combined into one. So that was done there. Uh, we approved site plans for a sculpture, uh, at Riverside Park by the Friends of Sculptures and that will be by the Parkway and Tennis Courts. And we also approved a, uh, sculpture plan for, uh, Veterans Avenue and Village Greenway, but, and that was by the Friends. And then we had a public hearing, uh, or we had discussion to set a public hearing and we are going to do that for next month for the property and that's a land use and zoning change for the property on the corner of Paradise and River Road, which the developers proposing a, it's, uh, they're proposing a multi-family complex in there. So it was a lot of stuff. Good meeting. And I, it sounds like it's gonna be twice as long in October. That's what we were, they warned us.
Can I ask, can I ask, John, going back to Rainbow Lakes, that project, is that the property immediately to the east of the condominium?
Hmm, which condominium?
Rainbow Lakes condominium?
As, yeah, as you go down and out, it's all the open properties where the roads are there and there's only some houses in there. It's, it's that.
So that's a little bit further east.
Yep.
They're like.
There is a, there is a.
Finishing out that development essentially.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. There, there is a large foundation there. I understand that that's gonna be redone too, or being worked on as part of that also. So I'm not sure if that's all in there yet or not, but it will be someday. It will be removed, the large foundation that's.
Are you referring to the one that's just to the south, the Rainbow Lake condominium?
Yeah, right now we have three buildings that are out there.
Um, it's the one to the south, basically adjacent to the parklands. That one will be eventually removed and then replaced with either a two-family or a combination of two-family and single-family house.
Yeah, that's kind of a nice store.
Yep. Yeah, it's been sitting out there for quite a while.
Yep. We've got a lot of development stuff going on that is, is starting to make the news, if you will, Facebook and things like that. And so again, if you have any questions, if you see something, you know, reach out to Jesse, reach out to John or Jim, or even Chief's been involved in a lot of these over the summer. And, uh, if you have questions about anything that you see online or whatever, um, go to the source and get the right answers and things like that. So it's, it's, it's a very exciting time. These four guys have been working on this type of stuff for a long time and now it's finally kind of becoming public, if you will. So, uh, it's exciting stuff. So don't be shy to reach out with questions as you, as you see things. So, all right, Administrator Report. Jesse?
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Uh, my world tour continues as I've been busy with both internal and external meetings. Um, introductory meetings are ongoing, uh, mixing in with, um, I am now in full swing, meeting with individual departments to discuss their, uh, budgetary requests, um, reviewing the budgets that have been forwarded to us, the library, the airport, et cetera. Uh, this, what this series of meetings, uh, for me specifically is about, is understanding what the individual departmental requests are, the context behind them, taking a look at some of the historical trends which are driving these reviews. But right now it is reviewing the individual budgets in silos, their individual silos. I'm, I'm looking at focusing on the specific department and the requests and the history thereof. Then with that, I, I'm circling back with the finance department to, in essence, um, a good analogy to make all the puzzle, puzzle pieces fit. We take all of those, um, requested budgets and create an executive budget or a draft budget. And I look to make the puzzle pieces fit. And if there's any changes to the requests, I'll communicate those to the individual departments prior to publishing out the executive budget to you, the council, for your review. Um, so with that, um, a lot of, uh, number crunching going on, a lot of listening on my end and learning, which has been fantastic. Uh, it's going very well. A lot of, um, responsibly crafted requests from all of the departments. I want to make sure to communicate that to the council upfront because there are definitely some moving pieces here that we will have to talk through come budget time. But, uh, that being said, um, all of the departments have come forward in a very reasonable and responsible way, um, in what I am seeing. So with that, uh, you can look forward in the coming weeks, a draft budget getting in your hands to review and the October budget workshop. But otherwise, I will be, um, continuing to sprinkle in the introductory meetings and getting out, uh, more and more into the community amongst, uh, that, that workload. So that's my report for now. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Any questions for Jesse? If not, any Alderman updates, reports? Rhett?
Yeah, excuse me. I'm trying to bring up, uh, some details. Um, so I'm sure most people are aware of the, uh, the flood, flooding that we had, uh, sometime early in August. I just wanted to highlight, uh, kind of a, a positive, um, uh, development that, uh, a number of, uh, of the residents in my district have, uh, reached out to, um, those who, um, were very, some who were very severely impacted on, uh, in the 16th Avenue area. People might know that as the area, maybe a block or two, um, away from Silverbrook. And, uh, they're hosting a benefit at Gary's Place and that's gonna be on Wednesday, the 17th. There's gonna be live music and I, it's my understanding that, um, if you purchase food, that 10% or so the, of the proceeds are gonna go to supporting those folks. Uh, there's also the opportunity to donate through raffles or even just directly to a GoFundMe site. And I, it's my understanding that a hundred percent of the proceeds are going directly to those families in an equal way. Uh, I personally was able to go down and visit some of the houses and, uh, I mean, I'm not sure how it's impacted other areas in town, but I, you know, at least one resident had the entire back of his house collapse in where you could basically look into his basement from the outside. And, um, I talked to another gentleman, uh, who had to strip it, you know, this is a first-time homeowner, several children, had to strip all the carpet all, and, you know, he was a contractor and, and he had already figured out that this was gonna cost him hundreds of thousands of dollars already. Um, and again, it, I know it, it impacted different people, different ways, but, uh, there's a number of really, uh, sad stories on that, just on that block. Uh, you know, a whole week of, of folks just throwing, putting all their old valuables into dumpsters and, uh, and just basically saying goodbye to all that stuff. Um, so anything people can do to help, I think would be appreciated. Uh, that's, it's, you know, for me, it's just about being a good neighbor and, and, uh, imagining that this is a, something that could potentially happen to any of us. Um, as they said, this is kind of a 500-year flood, so, um, this is a pretty exceptional case. So, uh, that's the 17th at Gary's Place, uh, and, uh, I think it's, yeah, 3:30 to 8:30. Um, and I think that they're also promoting, I'll, I mean, I'd have it on my, my, uh, Facebook page, but, uh, um, the GoFundMe campaign. So, thanks.
Yep. Thank you, Rhett. Any other announcements on, how about on this side first? Anybody over here? How about on this side?
I just want to reiterate what, uh, Rhett had said and, you know, some of these people, it's total loss. It's terrible. So if we can do anything to help them, I'd encourage everybody up here to consider going down there, uh, showing your support to these folks.
Wednesday, the 17th at Gary's Place.
16th.
Six.
Or no, 17th.
Seventeenth. Seventeenth. Any other announcements tonight? I got a couple of quick ones for you if you want to write these down. Also on the 17th at 12:30, We Energy Service Center is gonna have a groundbreaking and, uh, it's basically behind Piggly Wiggly. And so would love to have, uh, council members at that event. Uh, I will be out of town and unable to attend that one, uh, but it should be, it, it, it's, it's an exciting development out in that TID district. It basically completes that TID and then provides an opportunity where they currently are for future redevelopment, if you will. So, uh, groundbreaking, 12:30 on, uh, the 17th for We Energy, We Energies. And then on the 18th at 4 o'clock, Marine Park Technical College Advanced Manufacturing Center is having a ribbon cutting. And that's gonna be a really neat, uh, event at 4 o'clock. Uh, I think, um, Senator Baldwin is gonna be there. Uh, the Milwaukee Tool Shed Band is gonna be playing that night. Uh, so it's gonna be kind of a ribbon cutting turned into a, a party, if you will. So that's on the 18th at 4 o'clock. We do have both of those events posted, publicly posted. So if there's a quorum, uh, accidental quorum, it's not, uh, a big deal as long as you don't talk shop while you're there. That's all I have. Any other thoughts, questions, comments tonight?
If not, we have a couple of items that may be appropriate for closed session tonight. So I will read the state statute. It's the same statute, uh, for both, and that is statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And the two items in discussion tonight under that statute would be a developer's agreement for TID number 14 and the UWM Washington County property.
We need separate motions?
Separate motions.
All right. I will entertain a motion on the developer's agreement for TID number 14.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So I heard, uh, Alderman Berquist and Alderman Zingshaim?
Sternig.
Sternig and Zingshaim?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I will take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Zingshaim?
Aye.
Seizer?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Butchlick?
Aye.
Berquist?
Aye.
Sternig?
Aye.
Ingle King?
Aye.
All right. And then I will entertain a motion for the, uh, the other closed session item, again, 19.5.1E, which I've already read, and that is the UWM Washington County property.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Berquist. Any comments, questions, discussion? Sternig?
Aye.
Seizer?
I'm sorry, I, I, I had to comment. I.
Yes.
Just on this, this, uh, issue, I, I'd hoped that there'd be the possibility of, uh, some opportunity for public comment. I know we reviewed this previously in a session about, you know, the county versus the city's, uh, role in this, but I don't believe we've had any opportunity as a, as a city council to hear residents talk about that, other than, you know, public listening sessions that perhaps the mayor has been present at. So, um, I'm happy to talk about it in, uh, private session, but I, um, my inbox has been flooded from individuals who have a lot of concerns about this issue.
Do we want to have any further discussion on that or I, that's, that discussion is really not appropriate for a closed session. So if we want to talk about whether or not we should have a, a public hearing or a public comment, we need to have that discussion, uh, in open session, which I'm happy to do right now if you'd like. Any thoughts? Okay. We have a, yep.
What are we, uh, I mean, I'm willing to listen to public comments in that too, but I don't wanna, we don't need to have a yelling match either. What are we gonna, I mean, it's to say, oh, we don't have anything, we don't know what we're talking about yet. So isn't that something, I mean, if we go into closed session, we figure out what we're talking about, come back with the resolution or whatever and then open it up? Would that be a, I mean, that, that to me would be the process to follow.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think, I don't think you need to, well, we don't have a specific agenda item on for the, you know, discussion of whether there should be a public comment period or anything like, or, you know, public comment or anything like that. Um, certainly you could have that discussion, um, if there's, you know, desire to have that put on the agenda, uh, either as part of the next meeting or as a special meeting. You know, council members can always express that to city administrator and clerk and mayor and we can, they can have it on the agenda, uh, as a public comment period, um, you know, whenever it makes sense. Um, but I don't know that that's specifically, I, it, that, that issue itself wasn't on the agenda today. So I think it's just kind of a, you know, general discussion about what's the next step forward, um, which may or may not influence the direction the common council wants to take in the future as far as public comments. So, um, I would either express the desire after the closed session via, you know, email discussion with city staff and the mayor to put it on the agenda, or it can be brought up in open session at the next meeting as to public comment and when and where that should be. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. My concern is that we do, we would make a decision today without public comment.
No, but this is, this is the preliminary discussion about, you know, what's the next step and, you know, where, what, kind of what is the direction to city staff moving forward to, you know, negotiate one way or another, um, and then bring back agreements to the council for consideration. Um, the, the general procedure for the, the city, you know, for the common council is not, you know, approve parameters and direct, you know, the, it, the, the county often does parameters type approvals where it's like, yep, we're good with this concept, go, go for it and approve it at the executive committee and move forward with that contract. That hasn't traditionally been the way the city moves forward with contracts. So it's, you know, this is kind of the initial discussion of which, what's the next step and then formal agreements will be brought back to the council for open session consideration and approval in the future. Okay.
So there won't be any actionable items tonight?
Correct. We were, we, I probably could have said that. We will not reconvene into open session tonight.
For either one.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second on the UWM Washington County property conversation in closed session and I will restart the roll call, if you will. Butchlick?
Aye.
Berquist?
Aye.
Sternig?
Aye.
Ingle King?
Aye.
Seizer?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Zingshaim?
Aye.
Sparts?
Aye.
All right. We are now in closed session and we will not reconvene into open session tonight. We will adjourn from closed session. Thank you. Thank you.